Welcome to the regular city council meeting for Tuesday, July nineteenth at seven o'clock. We'll dispense with the roll call because everybody's present. And I would ask if someone would like to lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
I will.
Please say the pledge with me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, Betsy. Also like to ask if someone would like to offer an invocation or an inspirational thought? Anyone?
Bueller.
Okay, well, I'll say it.
Our Father in heaven, we are thankful tonight to be able to meet in this city council. Grateful for the good people that are here and for those that serve this city. We are grateful for the employees that we have and the goodness that they bring. Even the hard work that happens behind the scenes, we're grateful for all that is done for each and every person that lives here. We pray tonight as we discuss the items at hand that we may be able to make good decisions. We pray for inspiration and to always be aware of the needs of these citizens and how we represent them. We pray for that spirit to be with us tonight and are grateful for the freedoms and the land in which we live, especially for Santaquin. We say this in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
Does anybody have any potential conflicts of interest? Declaration that you'd need to make tonight on any of the agenda? Then let's just move straight into the consent agenda. Were you able to review the minutes of June thirtieth and the fifth of July? Are there any comments?
I have one, Mayor.
Okay.
The minutes for July the fifth, when we were talking about the pavilion for Holland Park, Park, per the wrap tax appeal. I believe I asked that if anybody had any, with the staff, if anybody had any past experience with this vendor? And I'd like that included in the minutes.
Okay. Any other? City expenditures for up to July fourteenth. Let me, let me ask you one thing too. Today I sent you that invoice through for the payment to the machinist. Is that included in this?
I am unsure, no, I doubt that because this is through the fourteenth, so.
Because of the nature of that, can we go ahead and move that or do we need to approve it later? Can we get that paid right away?
My understanding is it will be processed and paid tomorrow.
Oh, very good.
Yep.
Okay, any other questions on the expenditures for seven hundred ninety-five thousand and change?
I have a couple, Mayor.
Sure.
It looks like we're paying fifty-two seventy, five thousand two hundred and seventy-eight dollars to Payson for the solids from the D R F. What length of time does that cover? Is that a week's worth? Is that a two weeks' worth? Is it two days' worth?
I don't know exactly the answer on that. I believe our budget is somewhere between forty and fifty thousand a year on that, on that material, so. So a month. It might be a month and they might bill it on a monthly basis. I can check on that and verify for the.
I think they make three trips a week or something like that. Yeah, so.
Is there any possibility sometime down the road that we can accommodate that ourselves and not have to send it out? I don't, you know, not this week or next week or not even next year, but sometime in the future, we might want to try to consider that.
So that is a consideration. If I remember correctly, when the W R F went in, there was a commitment from that previous council that we wouldn't do that. But obviously that's something that is any, any council current or future could certainly consider. What that would entail is it would entail drying beds and laying that material out. And then the biggest thing for that is to find a market for it. So if there's a market for it, that would help benefit that, but.
There may be a point in time I, I could envision that it might be cost effective to process it ourselves, I don't know.
I've had the same idea and I talked with Jason Callaway about it and I would, I would suggest that you talk with him because he knows all about it and he can explain to you what an extensive and expensive process it is. And so, yeah, I've had the same idea, so good question.
The second item is we're paying J U B thirty-one thousand eight thirty-seven for Main Street widening design. Understanding that's a D O T road, we're still responsible to do the design to help them out or how does that interact with each other?
So that's part of our, our MAG award that we've got from Mountain Land Association of Governments. We've got about nine and a half million dollars that was awarded there through two, what they call tip processes, two cycles to transportation improvement projects. And that is part of that funding that we have received for, or will receive from MAG to be able to do the design. The, the thought has been since two thousand and ten or before that was that, that we would accommodate the widening of Main Street and the improvement thereof such that we don't become and have a problem similar to what Lehigh had many, many, twenty years ago before they had Pioneer Crossing and twenty-one hundred north.
Does D O T recognize that this is benefiting them? I mean, is there some give and take here?
I, I have no doubt that they recognize that it benefits them.
Okay, thanks.
Well, I, I can't. One, one thing about it is C D B G funds actually are kind of intermixed with U Dot and MAG and everyone else. So it's, it's a joint venture on, on the funding part.
Okay.
I can report to you also that the mayor and I and other staff have had good conversation and several meetings since he's been in office with, with U Dot on Main Street, the interchange, you know, all, all of that.
Right.
So we, we have a good relationship with them. Their, their, their thinking is that it's just not as high on their priority list as it is on ours. And that's, that's the reason why, again, we're trying to be proactive and there is that funding there from, from MAG to be able to do that. And so that's why we've gone throughout that process.
Okay, thank you. Lastly, I noticed that we're paying Rocky Ridge Gun Range four hundred dollars. Is that a one-time expense? Is that an annual fee? Are, are citizens allowed to use that range? What's the situation there?
Unknown, I can check into that for you.
Thank you.
Okay. The resolution for the inner local agreement for the ballot box, the surveillance camera. Emily, I know you were involved with that, but Jason, do you know what the resolution is with this?
It's myself and Emily, if you want, I can take that. So again, this is just a reimbursement for a camera that is mandated by the state and the county agreed to pay us for that camera. It will be part of our record keeping and part of our monitoring that for them. And then they've already sent a grammar request to be able to have that data so that we can provide that for them. But since we already have cameras on the building and, and Wi, you know, Wi-Fi and actually, I'm not sure it's Wi-Fi, it's probably hard, hardwired, but this is just a reimbursement for us to be able to get paid back for that camera that we've already purchased that is state mandated. The county has taken that and, and will reimburse us as they are the election officials to, to monitor and facilitate the elections.
Okay, the next item is the discussion and possible action on the fire department radios.
Any questions?
Good job saving some money.
I think it, it probably starts with who changes what with radios? And all of a sudden, how do we end up with it?
It, it's not all of a sudden. So the state of Utah has a radio authority called Utah Communications Authority. They built out the eight hundred megahertz systems a number of years ago. We actually used to pay a fee per radio to operate that system. A few years ago, the legislature then funded the system so we don't longer pay a subscription. Phase one was a system that we've been on for quite some time and as technology's changed, now it needs to implement phase two, which is, has a broader spectrum, a little more coverage and more safety and security to it. So radios that we're currently using are fifteen years old and are not phase two compliant. So we've slowly started integrating the phase two radios. And we purchased some with COVID money. We used some reserve funds to get all the officers their handhelds so that they were online right away. We have roughly forty-five radios left that need to be replaced. And we were able to find these new old stock radios that carry the same warranty, brand new and boxed, just a year old for a fraction of the cost. We're able to purchase twenty-two of them, which is all we had for the same price we'd be able to buy fifteen of the new ones. So it's, it just saves us a lot of money.
I know the old, the other eight hundreds are fifteen years old. Are they beyond life at this point?
They're beyond life. You cannot get parts for them. I actually have two downstairs that when they drop or break, they're, they're dead. They can't repair them. They're not really worth trying to, I mean, we've kept them just so if we absolutely had to salvage parts, we might be able to build one out of four. But this purchase allows us to, there was actually a three-year plan to replace all forty-five with fifteen a year in our budget. Well, we're able to get a couple extra this year, which helps us out. And those radios also incorporate the E O C radios that we have for emergency operations. And then we're, with the officers buying new mobiles in their patrol cars, we're repurposing those slightly older ones to put into the snowplows so that the snowplow drivers have a truck mounted radio instead of trying to reach for a handheld or having it fall around. So they have communications with each other with dispatch and with police and fire in the event that we need them.
So we can still use them?
So we're still using them until they actually switch. But instead of, as everything keeps going up and up and up, trying to replace forty-five, maybe five thousand dollars apiece, we're trying to slowly phase them in so when they flip that switch next year or the two years from now, we're in compliance and not looking for a two hundred thousand dollar purchase.
Okay, any question? Comments? Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ryan. Chief. So with that in mind, all of those items are on the consent agenda. I would look for a motion to approve each of those with changes as noted and information from the Rocky Ridge that needs to come back to us.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Move in a second. Councilman Hathaway.
Aye.
Councilman Meekum.
Aye.
Councilman Sitaway.
Aye.
Councilman Adcock.
Aye.
Councilmember Montoya.
Aye.
Motion passed. Let's go on to recognitions. The chamber have a business of the month? Oh.
Okay, so it sounds, seems like the business of the month isn't here, but I'm with the chamber, so. Ironic because I was here receiving the award last year. So I'll just kind of give you a quick bio of, it's Tirebusters in Payson. Their, anyway, so their bio is in two thousand twenty, Gabe Dunn and Jesse Parent put their monstrous head together, head together and deduced that they could simply do it better without big corporate America meddling in their neighborhood affairs. As such, they went forth with the tenacity of Girl Scout selling cookies and they're shared, and shared their vision with the wonderful people of Utah County. What, what has transpired since is the creation and domination of three award-winning locations in Payson, American Fork and Price with the single most important goal to, to be helpful. Tirebusters Supreme Auto Care truly cares about its people and their neighborhoods in which they serve. They are diamond sponsors in both the Santaquin Orchard Days and the Payson Onion Days. And they said, we look for opportunities to give back to wonderful people that have stood with us in recent years, which, which just proves that we are passionate about orchards, onions and people. Keep it up for Tirebusters.
I wish they were here.
I know, yeah, I'm like, now I don't know what to do with this.
We'll get some tires and give it to them.
There you go, yeah.
Yeah.
I need some. I wonder if they do motorcycles.
Well, I appreciate that and you know what? We always look for good business and we know that they're in Payson and Price and American Fork and we wish them all the good luck there is. So, thank you. We'll move to the public forum and I'd like to go through the building permit and the licensing. Do you have your, and this, we may use this again in a minute, but.
Yeah, so we, we've looked at this in the, the work meeting and it sounds like we could look at it again. I, I guess the good news is, well, depending on how you look at it, but it, it feels like the rate of difference from this time last year to where we're at now hasn't changed since two weeks ago when I last reported this. We're still about sixty or so permits behind the pace last year. However, I still acknowledge that it's a lot of growth and things are still growing. We've already surpassed the two thousand nineteen total building permits that were built in, in that entire calendar year. So, yeah, I think it's certainly, certainly safe to say that things are slowing down a little bit. I wouldn't say it's, it's slowing down to a, a really big, huge concerning point. We, we still have some developments that are, are coming forward and with proposals and that'll create some more building lots and, and obviously opportunities for building. So, you know, it, it is what it is. It's, I know some people don't like the growth, but also there's, there's definitely some, some opportunities that can come from it as well. So that's the report for today. And then we have two home occupations to report that are up there on the screen for you. And happy to answer any questions you have.
Any questions? I wish there were about ten times that many. That's a statement, isn't it? Okay. Three Hundred West signage and striping implementation plan. And I know this was a hot topic in November and they went through a council meeting and there were a lot of discussions, a lot of things that needed to happen, a lot of public input. And it's taken some time. I know there's a lot of issues, the issues with even getting things through, through shipping to us. I, I did want to commend Norm and Jeff and Dave for taking time to go down three hundred knocking on the doors. Did I miss anybody? Did somebody else go? I was out of town. I thank you for doing that. I, I hope the, the response as you knocked on the doors, as you left the leaflet, the intent of what was going to happen with the street. We were hoping to have it signed and painted and that's going to happen fairly fast. But anyway, thank you for all the work that you did. So Norm, do you want to just go over it?
So Mayor and Council, this was again, shared with all of the residents that we were able to meet with, which is about forty of them, maybe thirty-eight, something like that. I think there were about eighty total doors that we knocked on. Those that weren't home, we left this flyer on their door so that they could understand what was happening. This is a double shot, I apologize for that, but that basically just helping them to understand what's going to happen. This is the first couple of blocks. And this is a visual representation of the signage that will be going up. The poles are already in place. The, the striping and the painting of the curb will happen sometime in the next two weeks. And the signage should be up probably sooner than that. We, we did want to make sure and visit with all of the residents and help them understand where the, the parking was going to be and where it was not going to be allowed. There will be, again, parking on the east side for that block and a half where the townhomes are there. Just on the park strip and the, and the curb, not on the sidewalk, there'll be a special stripe that'll go along the edge of the, off of the sidewalk, but on the park strip curb, uh, concrete that will help folks to know where to park and where not to park. And that's my report. I would also indicate that at least the, the folks that I visited with on Thursday night were much appreciative of us coming out and having that discussion with them and helping them to understand. I didn't get any concern about, you know, what's happening or where we're going. There's no action on this tonight. I just want to report back to you that we, this is kind of the final step of the public education process. We're in a public meeting, we've knocked on all the doors that were adjacent to, to Three Hundred West and I, I think we're ready to go. And so I'm, that's my report and again, there's no action on this item tonight. Questions, thoughts?
I just wanted to say one thing. Aren't those signs supposed to be street representative? And aren't half of them backwards?
No, they're, they're a, they're a visual representation of where the, where the direction of flow is not allowed. And so you're right, they're, they're, from a very technical engineering standpoint, you're right, half of them are backwards. But for folks that, that don't understand that technical aspect of it, this is a visual representation of where flows will and will not be allowed.
I just want to say that picture is wrong.
From a, from a very technical engineering aspect, you're right, Mayor. But again, we're, we're dealing with folks that, that we wanted to help represent and help them understand where things were allowed and not allowed, so.
As long as it's not confusing to them.
Right, it won't be, it'll be.
When the signs are up, it'll, it'll be right.
It'll be the correct directions on the sign.
I hope so, because if they do it to that, it's going to be wrong half of the way. They'll just be going all over.
Thank you for pointing that out, Mayor.
Any other questions on that?
That would look like me trying to do Mario Kart Rainbow Road.
Okay. We don't have to make any action on that. We could just move on to the reports, so.
Sure.
Ryan, since you're here and you're an officer, do you have a report that you would like to give from the fire department?
Sure. So in July, we started staffing five people during the day and it's been very handy and grateful. The fire department is continuing with hydrant testing to make sure that we're in compliance, spending each and every one of our hydrants throughout the city as required by I S O. Found a few hydrants that are broken, not on or damaged. So it's actually a good exercise for them. And then we've actually been out doing some fuel mitigation. We've worked with some landowners to get weeds cut down. We're working with the Ridley's. We, we're back on the phone with them today. Mark pushed us to, I'm guessing his brother, who is going to be renting a tractor he has until Friday to get those weeds down or we'll be doing it and invoicing him.
Thank you.
So we made contact with the property just north of Macy's and they were on it the next day and got that down. Crews actually today went out. We had one over by the trailer court on East Main. One of the residents from the trailer court called in concerned about the weeds just to the south. And when I knocked on that homeowner's door, she's a ninety-one-year-old widow. She was going to try to find some help. I told her you could ask, but we actually went over today and cut back ten feet in between the trailer court and that so that it, because she just can't get out there.
Yeah.
So.
How much is there more to cut?
There's quite a bit of property there and they've got a lot of trees back there and stuff. And so without a tractor and a mow deck, but what that does is if something happened, it would run right up to the trailer court. So that's the least we could do to help her out. We, we don't mind helping, but we're not going to do it for them. So if you see weed issues like that, please let us know. Taylor is back from the military. For those that don't know, the, he's my acting fire marshal and he's a great asset to have. I appreciate his dedication and work, so.
Good. One comment, you wrote a letter to Luke Decker regarding lock on the gate.
You, you wrote that letter, Mayor.
You wrote that letter.
You encouraged me. I sent that letter.
Well, we appreciate that, so.
I also met with superintendent up on the job site and there is always a daisy chain lock in that. And the Forest Service is, is able to open and that Forest Service key you have works on it. So I would suggest maybe an evening run after those guys leave for the day, just to verify that you have a key that works there. But they told me the daisy chain works with your forest lock.
I bought a new K twelve last month. So I have a key, it's just an expensive replacement.
Yeah. Okay.
Now, we'll, we'll make sure. We appreciate that for what spawned that conversation is we actually had an individual come down from the Payson side right above Timmies Flat and get ran over by their own vehicle. They got out not realizing their vehicle was still in gear and it ran them over. So the construction crew was a big help in shuttling crews and actually started backfilling in the the washout so that we could get our side by side to the patient. So that, we're lucky the gate was open at the time, so.
Usually not a, usually not an issue because the gates are usually open in the summertime, but where they're doing work in construction up there, they're not, so.
Yeah, and if you see anything that, that worries you or concerns you, reach out to me. I'm happy to answer anything I can.
Okay.
We appreciate all you do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jason.
Yeah, so just a heads up, I've, I've mentioned some of the things already. Next week at planning commission meeting, we've got four public hearings. One of them is related to a proposed ordinance amendment for agritourism, defining agritourism and then allowing it as a temporary use. Another public hearing is related to detached accessory dwelling units as, as initiated by the council. Another one is a, again, initiated by the council, a public hearing related to automotive repair and services on the, in the Main Street Business District Zone. And then we have a public hearing for a three-lot subdivision concept plan, which is just on the north side of Main Street. So that's the planning commission meeting next week. I don't, really don't have much. I, I guess I can wait till we get a little bit closer to Orchard Days, but I'll, I'll be coordinating with you on the parade situation. I think I'm going to be driving the mayor and council in, in your vehicle. So I'll, I'll work with you to make sure that I know where to be and, and how to accommodate you in, in your, being in that parade. So other than that, I don't have anything else.
Okay, Norm?
Yeah, so on that note, I have a, a previous commitment that I'm not able to get out of for that. So I've asked Jason to, to handle transporting the mayor and council for that meeting. I would just remind you of the discussion we've had before about not throwing candy from the vehicle, but as you're walking along or whatever happens that way. We, we talked about the meeting on August ninth and not having one on August second. We did upgrade the server in the building over the weekend. And that's, I think, helping things to get going faster and helping us to have the computing power that we need. Just wanted to point out, John Bradley had dropped off historic preservation books for you guys for the, for the city. Those, they had, I think, several hundred of those printed and there's some pretty cool stuff in there. If you want to take a look at that, if you have questions on that, get with John or members of the Historic Preservation Committee. Also, you should have seen some tickets to the rodeo. Is that, did they, okay.
Yeah, we've got them here.
Yeah, all right. We're, we're coming up on probably four to six weeks away from having Harvest View done as far as the pickleball courts and the parking lot. The parking lot has been being paved the last two days. They'll probably finish that up tomorrow or the next day. The, the question was brought, do you, would, would the council like to have a ribbon cutting of some sort out there to kind of kick off the use of that, those pickleball courts and the.
We need a pickleball game.
You want it in a, in the form of a pickleball game?
Yeah.
Okay. There's actually a tournament there for.
Do you know how to play?
Orchard Days.
Perfect. Do you know how to play?
I do. I love pickle.
I don't, I would like a lesson.
Never played in my life. Can I do with a golf club? Don't play once because it'll be a new hobby, I promise. Nah.
So again.
It's like golf, once you play, then you can't quit.
I'm so excited for those.
It's fun.
So again, is there a desire to have a ribbon cutting at some point? We can set a date, maybe a month or so out. There, there's still, I would estimate, four to six weeks to finishing and having all the landscaping in and the bathroom up and running and all that kind of stuff so that we have facilities.
You know, you know, I would like to do that and I know this isn't a business, but wouldn't it be nice to have the chamber there too?
Okay.
You know? It's one of the reasons people move to Santaquin is because they're addicted to paddle ball. Pickleball. They, they know how to play it and say it.
Okay, so Mayor, would you like to set a date for that now? I would anticipate that it would be probably the week after Labor Day. Sometime the ninth or the tenth, seventeenth of September or something of that nature.
Well, since everybody's on top of our Orchard Days, let's do it on Labor Day Monday when Payson's celebrating and.
Unfortunately have another commitment, I won't be able to be there that day.
Tuesday, the sixth and play the city council. The week, the week after.
It'd be fine.
Yeah.
Instead of city council.
We'll have pickleball.
We can just do city council on the pickleball courts.
Exactly.
Yeah, there you go.
So like the tenth or something, when we said that.
If it's, is either a, either a Saturday for Lynn and me or an evening? Because school will have started by that time.
That's why I'm thinking the tenth is a Saturday.
Okay.
The, the Saturday after the weekend of Memorial Day. Labor Day, sorry. I'll get caught up sometime.
Who knows by then?
Let's see.
You know, I don't like that day, but you know, we could go.
Would that be in the morning?
It's my anniversary, so I gotta ask for permission.
Well, let's pick something different then.
So make it early in the morning so he can go. You know what? Are there people that are going to have like tournaments? Is there groups that are coming together that are organizing things? And would they be having something that we could actually start right before they're there, kick it off officially and leave? Because maybe John. Because maybe John knows.
I like that.
Mayor, that Saturday, the tenth, uh, the city has a five-k and one, one mile run at eight AM at Summer Ridge.
Oh, that's right. Run down to the.
At what time?
Eight AM.
Eight AM.
So seven o'clock in the morning, because.
I'll, I'll get with John and, and John.
Let's do that, but let's also find out, I, I would dare bet.
Tournament or something.
That there are people that live around there that are like Lynn, that think that this is the best thing since Shirt Pockets.
I think that you've got staff that have that same.
Yeah, there's a lot of them. I don't even know if you play with a paddle or a bazooka, but, uh.
I'll bring one and you and I can have a game.
I'm gonna play with a driver.
I'll bring. So there, there, there is a tournament that's related to Orchard Days pending that. Being ready, and I believe that it will be ready for that, the, the, the main restroom will not be, so we'll have to have some porta-potties there. But, uh, I believe that, that there is a tournament for that, but that's the week of Orchard Day, so that's not gonna work for us.
Is, is public safety doing anything this year, around September eleventh? Okay, I was, well, sure, if there's something you can piggyback on for that too.
Okay, I'll, I'll get with John Bradley and we'll talk about that the next meeting, but maybe it's the tenth or the seventeenth, something like that, we'll try and. Get some more details, the, the question was, do you wanna have one, sounds like we do, and we'll try and get some more details.
If, if we do, let's, let's see if we can either find or encourage some kind of a tournament or play that they're, they're doing as a group, that, uh.
Sure.
Could bring together a few more people, I, it's, it's quite an investment we've made, let's make the most of it.
Yep. Okay, um, on the twenty-seventh of July, we have our, uh, birthday ice cream social, rather than a, a birthday lunch, we're gonna be hav- just having some ice cream in the. Out in the bays at, from one to two, so people can still have their lunches, but, uh, you're, you're more than welcome to come and mingle with your staff. That will be, again, the twenty-seventh from one to two out in the bays, and it won't be a meal, it'll just be ice cream. Um. And I think that that's all I have for this meeting, and then I've got stuff written down for the executive session mayor.
Yeah, great. Okay. Um, Councilman Hathaway.
Yeah, I just have, uh, um, kind of a, just, that's, comment about, we had our rodeo and. Celebration committee meeting Wednesday, last Wednesday, everybody involved was there, um, I, I just want the citizens to know that there'll be. A lot of activities that they can do this year, it, it should be fun, and there's a lot of stuff going on, so. I hope everybody can come out and enjoy all of the stuff that's been planned, and kudos to the staff for getting that Corral. The rodeo arena ready, Norm, can you tell them that?
Yep.
Other than that, and plan on having a, a great celebration.
And, and if you haven't gotten it, you should be receiving your, your booklet in the mail this week.
Yes, yep.
Unless you happen to not get mail at home and only get it at the post office box, and you don't get a booklet, and that needs to be corrected.
I've, I've heard that before, and we will do what we can to try and correct that.
You got yours.
Yes, I did.
Well, that's mean. Lynn? Um, just appreciate the, I, I brought up the weeds, uh, last time we met, and noticed on my walk, they were knocked down fairly quickly, so appreciate that, that was a real fire hazard, and there's still one up there, he's working on it though, but I just appreciate getting right on that. That's, that's great, hopefully we avoid a problem, so thank you. Good. Jeff?
Um, the chamber president told us last night that on the twenty-sixth, so next Tuesday, they're doing some sort of networking event with Paris RV. So, next Tuesday at five-thirty, up at Paris RV in Payson, she invited all of us to go, they're gonna talk about how they're kind of scaling their business, how they've. Been growing recently, and then afterwards, they're going to Chubby's for dinner. So, if anyone wants to go, Tuesday the twenty-sixth.
And it's pay for your own dinner.
I, I assume, sorry, yes. Yes.
Can you, can you talk them about, talk to them about building a, a Paris RV in Santaquin as well, since we are the gateway to Utah County?
That's true, probably should've thought about that five years ago.
Yeah, or even two years ago.
And, yeah, that's, oh, and we're getting the banner for the elected officials booth at Hometown Market this week, I think you said.
Now, now I'm concerned if we put more than two people in there at a time, for the reason of having a council.
So far, it's only been two at a time, Dave and I were there last week, Art showed up and I left, and then this, yesterday was just Art and me. Uh, we're not, I think the banner's gonna help, we're not, only people who like personally know us are coming and talking to us, I don't think those people know, you know, what we're doing, who we are. I, I kind of expect, um, we'll see how with the banner if it picks up, if not, if, you know, we're only getting a few people every now and then, I think every other week would be fine. Cause it goes till the end of September, so we've got a couple months still.
The last two Monday nights, I've been working till almost dark, so. I wasn't about to go down there.
No, it's fine.
Yeah.
It was good, we, we were right, where you can hear the concert too, so you, you're enjoying the market, you're just sitting in the booth.
How many, how many more are there?
Every Monday till the end of September, I think September twenty-sixth.
So, eight more at least, eight, nine more.
Yep.
Okay, well, thank you, thank you for going there, thanks for being a part of it, I, I think it's important, I don't know. How much interaction we get overall, but if it's there, and it's a good thing.
Okay.
Art?
We've tried to be conscientious about having, not having a quorum there, so we're cognizant of that responsibility. Um, I really hate to bring this up, but I feel like I need to. Seven months ago, or six months ago, we talked about the city council doing the newsletter, I have really enjoyed the mayor doing it. But if I have that responsibility, I'd like to know when it is, because it seems like the schedule for that s- slid.
For doing the newsletter that goes into the thing, I have to submit mine every month by the fifteenth. Well, I would say, if you had something, I, I don't know what we have for page width to do it.
We did set up a schedule and then sent out invitations to remind us to start writing them.
Yeah, but that.
I just saw mine on my calendar.
It got changed.
That slid though.
Right, there was, there was, because of state noticing requirements, again, those lovely mandates that we get from the state. Um, the budget had to take up some of that room for, I believe, two months, and so.
Yeah, that's fine.
I will, I, Art, I will check on that and figure out where that schedule is and.
I'm really okay with only the mayor doing it, is what I'm trying to say.
You're, what you're saying is you only hear one side of this, huh?
Uh, Art, if that were the case, you probably just should've not said anything. I don't work that way, I'm sorry.
You can write mine too, then. You know, this, this next month.
When it's my turn, it'll be brief.
Next month, you're gonna read a whole different outlook on it, cause it's not the same kinda report. I didn't think, no.
It's good.
It was, uh, a little bit different, so, uh.
Is Ryan still hiding back there? Ryan, I'd, I'd just talk to you in public. We're having that fire retire- retirement, the flag retirement thing on July twenty-ninth at six-thirty, right after the dinner. Um. How involved is the fire department gonna be, you just gonna have somebody on standby in case things get out of control, or?
We'll have an engine there, so that if, and when you're ready to put the fire out, we can do so quickly.
It's, it's gonna be in that. Fire pit there right by the pavilion.
So do you have the wood for that?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, we'll be there for you.
Okay, any concerns with me? Um.
Not that I can say in public.
Our.
Letting, letting the flags be sprinkled with kerosene, so they're a little more flammable.
You'd be surprised how fast those flags will burn, if you had a hotbed of coals, they will burn really quick, the majority of them are a nylon material, and they'll melt right away.
A lot of mine are cotton. The ones I get from the post office.
That should actually burn.
Um, that pit's about forty-seven inches across.
Repair the shop, should not play with fire.
I've got fifty flags, so far that I've picked up from the post office in the last twelve months.
We'll, we'll take care of them.
Okay, just wanna coordinate a little bit, thanks.
Um, Art, if there are individuals who have flags that they need to dispose of properly, can they just contact you?
Sure, or leave them at the box at the post office that's on the counter for everyone to deposit, that's where the fifty I have came from.
Okay, good to know, thank you.
Okay. Betsy?
Um, I am, let's see, the U.S. City Council will be helping a lot with Orchard Days, so we're looking forward to that. Good times every year, and, uh, the library board asked me to pass on a request. There was a discussion at our board meeting last week about, um, the postponement of active fundraising for, um. Relocating the library into the northwest wing of the new city hall, which is fine, um, but the, the board as a whole asked me to, to pass on a request. That that wing somehow be designated as library. And that, so I am passing on that request on their behalf, if, I told them that I did not know if that would, if the council. Would be in favor of that, I, I did not know what the process would be, but I told them that I would pass on the request and find out.
No comment, or are you expecting me to answer that?
I, I, are there any, are there any thoughts on that?
Um, there's a few reasons why we've, uh, kind of curtailed the, um.
The fundraising.
Fundraising.
Right, we've talked about that.
Are you aware of those, okay.
Yes.
So, uh, it's not like it's gone away, and it's not like anything else has gone away, I think they're postponing it for a little while.
Correct, I explained that to them.
Because we've got some other things that we really need to get in line before big donors will step in, and we're trying to get those done.
Yeah, and I explained that to them.
Yeah.
Um.
I thi- I think that's about it, I don't know that we've discussed any changes, any designations. I don't know that anything has changed.
If you want to think about it, um, then, and let me know if you have any additional thoughts, or anybody from the council has any additional thoughts. Just let me know, so that I can share those with our librarian and the library board. That's all I have.
Well, I have a few things, um. Went to the, uh, canyon to, to the end of phase one today, and all things seem to be falling in line, we drove up with the superintendent and, uh. At his request, so, uh, got to see it, works progressing, um. You know, what seems to have been an awful big thing doesn't seem to be that big while you're looking at it, I, I don't know, it's just, you know. Uh, I, they're doing wonderful work, doing a lot of, lot of work to get it done. Um, so, I anticipate phase one will finish up pretty close to on time, somewhere around that first week of August. Um, they did tell me that the negotiation is about complete for phase two, but they will not start into phase two, it sounded to me like, uh. Joanne, is that her name? Has, has made all the agreements with the federal highways, so the money's there, things are in place, phase two will be underway. They actually told me that they were hoping that they'd be able to, uh, uh, finish another contract that's already scheduled after. Phase one is complete, and then come back and do most of phase two, but it depends on where that, that puts them. If they have to wait for the box culvert, a, a long period of time, that will curtail, uh, finishing the road, passability. And that's gonna be the biggest part of phase two, I would think, they do have some, uh, stream bank stabilization with walls after being built. On the Dave Wilson Hill, if you know where that is, so. Other than that, very good people, I know that they helped, uh, Ryan while they were doing the rescue the other day. And, uh, it stopped construction completely. And so, that's kinda what they deal with, I, I remember being on construction crews that, uh. If there was a fire and you were working up in the forest, you were expected to take your equipment and your man and go do it, so. I don't know that they do that anymore, but, you know, back in the day, that was the way it was. Uh, and, and just a general note, I, I've sent you pictures and, uh, just want you to know the parking lot's rolling, so. Um, I hope to be able to park a vehicle up there soon. Um, I did drive my truck onto it, to say I could be the first one, but. It's, it's fun, it's fun to see things coming together, we've got the forest service involved, John got some approvals together, and, uh. I'm gonna work on the, the bridge here pretty quick, so we'll, we'll get that done, so. Uh. We've, we have continued with a lot of discussions on some of the things we've found, as we've gone through the budget, and, uh. You know, I think we'll bring those up as we go through, especially what we've talked about with, um, uh, Rod tonight. All of that during the work session, where we talked about budget, taxes, finance, revenues. That's a serious discussion, and it needs to happen, we need to look at it. Uh, whenever you mention taxes, all of a sudden, we become a bad guy. And, uh, not a thing we can do about it for well over a year. And we need to decide what the best plan of action is, what we've been set up for, and how we're gonna address it. I just feel like we are at that point, and I think you've all had a good view of it tonight. And, uh, I, I think our goal should be education of ourselves, of the people that we know, of anyone that questions anything. So that we have all of that in order before we even bring it as a, uh, presentation to a city council meeting, okay? Or any kind of an open meeting. So, uh, I do not have anything further, however, I would like to propose that we excuse to an executive session.
Mayor, I have one more thing, if that's okay.
What?
Um, there were one thousand one hundred sixty-four childrens who signed up for the summer reading program. And you and I will be attending the end of summer reading program tomorrow, party tomorrow, so I just thought that I would.
Four o'clock, right?
Let, yeah, I just thought I would let everyone know how many children, um, so every week, those children who have participated and done their reading. Have received a little hand-packed treat bag, or some kind of something, a reward to keep incentivizing them. And, um, Jen and her team have prepared one thousand one hundred sixty-four of those every week.
Oh, my goodness.
So, it's, it's, yes, it's, it's been a huge smashing success, and they have spent countless hours and time, so I didn't wanna leave out that important fact, so thank you.
Is it at the library, or is it?
Yes.
How do we fit all those people into that?
It's gonna be outside, so it's gonna be hot, but, um, whoever comes will squeeze onto the grass. And you are going to choose the winners of the prize drawing, and I am going to talk about, oh, that's one other thing. Thank you for asking that question, my brain is weird today. Um, Tabitha's Way contacted me and said that every year, they do a loaded school backpack giveaway. And I had no idea that they did that, and they, um, to any parent who shows up with their kids. Um, they give them, e- each child gets a brand-new backpack filled with school supplies for free. And, um, I have flyers for it, some are downstairs on the counter, some are at the rec office, some are at the library, and some will be at the party tomorrow. And then I will also be handing them out at the, um, food bank lunch truck a couple of days next week. Um, but she said last year, they had over five hundred backpacks left over, and they don't want any leftover. And so, they asked for my help, um, to get the word out and distribute those, so.
When, when are they gonna put them out?
Um, I, the flyers are out already, I don't.
Are they gonna do it tomorrow night?
No, it is, um, I should've put a flyer in my folder, but it is the twenty-ninth, I believe. Um, it's in Spanish Fork at. Um it's in Spanish Fork at the fairgrounds from nine AM to eleven AM. But again, the flyers are downstairs on the counter, the rec building, the library, and I'll be giving them out tomorrow and at the food bank's lunch at the park. So I'll be giving out flyers to families.
Is there anything you wanna put on Facebook?
Um maybe I'll, maybe I'll text Penny. I can, I'll text her a picture of the flyer, so she can put it on our Facebook if that's okay with you.
I think that would be good.
So.
Get it out to in the community groups, see if there are families that would like to get that.
Okay, yeah, thanks for reminding me.
I don't know how I did that.
Well, because you asked details about the end of summer reading party tomorrow. And that brought to my mind that I'm supposed to announce that and hand out some flyers there tomorrow.
Yeah, and all I wanted to know is where they were all gonna go.
So see, it's a, it's it's like throwing a a pebble in a pond. That's how my brain works. It's ripple effects today.
Okay. Alright, uh so we need to excuse to an executive session uh because of. Pending lit- litigation and or purchase, exchange or lease of real property. And uh I would like, I'd like to ask for a motion to adjourn to that meeting. And then we will come back later to adjourn this meeting.
So moved.
Second?
I'll second, but can I, can we have a five minute?
Yeah.
You need to vote on it first.
Yeah. Councilmember Hathaway.
Aye.
Councilmember Meakin.
Aye.
Councilmember Sitaway.
Aye.
Councilmember Adcock.
Aye.
Councilmember Montoya.
Aye.
And all the council members, where I, in the uh roll call vote, which we do all the time. Thank you very much.